Dawn peeked through the leaves, bringing with it the gentle promise of a new day. That morning nestled in her dad's warm arms, little Lily was brought to her aunt's house.
It's so hot. Are you tired?
Lily snuggled up to her kind aunt, her bright red t-shirt making her look even more adorable and tiny. Any initial shyness quickly melted away, replaced by cheerful laughter as the two began to play, marking the start of many love-filled days together. Afterward, the aunt and niece went into the kitchen together. The aunt prepared a nutritious meal full of vegetables for Lily. Seeing her aunt busy cutting slices of green squash, the little girl was eager to help. Even though she was clumsy, the little monkey tried to copy her aunt's movements. Her tiny hands touching the pieces of squash, creating moments that were both cute and funny.
Do you want to do this? Are you happy? Do you want to hang out with me? Are you afraid?
Sao rồi? À, qua đây nè.
Wait a minute.
Gọi gì đấy đồ ăn nhá.
When the food was cooked, she carefully put it on a plate.
Wow!
It's time for lunch. It's delicious.
Ngon quá nhỉ?
Would you like to eat?
Qua đây ngồi ha, qua đây ăn ha. Qua đây ngồi.
Sit down please. For you.
Được rồi, được rồi. Rồi. Wow!
Lily was delighted and even tried to use the fork herself, skillfully scooping up small bites.
Do you like it?
Ngon đấy, thích đấy. Ăn này đi con.
Her adorable independence showed through as she picked up any fallen pieces of food and continued her meal, encouraged by the affectionate eyes of her dad and aunt sitting beside her. After lunch, the aunt, dad, and Lily went to visit the banana garden behind the house. Under her tilted conical hat, the image of the aunt looked especially gentle and dear. Lily's clear eyes lit up with pure, simple joy as she saw nature's gift for the first time. Seeing her niece's excitement, the aunt gently chose a ripe yellow banana, carefully peeled back the soft skin, and handed it to the little one. Peacefully nestled in her aunt's strong and loving arms, Lily eagerly took it. She slowly enjoyed each sweet bite, seeming to taste not just the flavor of the earth, but also the boundless love her aunt had for her. That moment was as peaceful and sweet as the banana on her lips. The fun didn't stop there. The aunt also took time to play with Lily. She dressed her in a cute green outfit with a small backpack and took her for a ride on an old bicycle. Lily sat behind, her tiny arms wrapped tightly around her aunt, enjoying the feeling of being loved and protected. Sometimes, she would hop into the front basket to get a better view of the world around her. Back at home, the little one was eager to help in the kitchen again. Without anyone asking, Lily scurried inside, her bright eyes scanning the room like a tiny explorer looking for a mission. Spotting ripe red tomatoes on a small refrigerator, she performed a spectacular climb, quickly grabbing them as if to show off her helpful skills. Faced with this mischievous but adorable act, her aunt didn't scold her. Instead, she let out a gentle laugh, her heart melting. She lovingly stroked Lily's head, praising her talented little helper. The aunt began to cut tomatoes and cucumbers, the sound of the knife making a happy rhythm. Lily sat properly at the table. Her aunt would give her a crisp slice of cucumber as a small reward, which Lily happily accepted. With skillful hands, her aunt arranged the vegetables, turning the salad into a small work of art, and then gave Lily some fresh lettuce leaves.
It looks delicious, Lily. It's delicious.
Finally, she carefully drizzled creamy mayonnaise over the top.
Lily, see it for me. Now. Now I will make for you. Are you okay?
And made a special separate portion on a small plate, just for her niece. Seeing the delicious plate in front of her, Lily's face lit up with joy.
Lily, it's delicious, right? Let's enjoy the meal. Okay. Lily, it's good delicious. Enjoy your meal.
She happily picked up her fork and eagerly enjoyed the meal made by her aunt.
It's good. Lily, eat a cucumber like me.
Each crisp, cool bite seemed to melt in her mouth, filled with the simple, warm happiness that came from her aunt's love. Many years went by, and Lily was now a grown-up monkey. No longer the tiny baby she once was, the bond between Lily and her aunt remained as strong as ever, and had even grown deeper over time. One morning, a familiar feeling returned to the house. Her dad was preparing for another business trip. He brought out a red suitcase, and little Lily clung to him, even climbing onto the suitcase as if she couldn't bear to let him go. Her dad sat down and held her close. With one hand busy on a phone call, he never stopped gently patting his little girl with the other. Lily curiously watched the phone, then turned back to her dad, trying to hold on to every last precious moment with him.
Rồi, đi vào xuống nhá. Đi nhà ngoan đi chưa? Đi xuống tới đi kìa. Đi ra đi, đi ra. Ra đi ông này, ra đi ông. Lại giờ đi xuống cao đi Lily nhá. Anh đi công tác mấy ngày ha? Đi ra nhà đi ông nhá. Đi đi nhá. Ra chơi nhá. Ngon chưa? Từ quậy nhá.
Hoa đây chơi Lily.
Từ quậy đi ông nhá. Nhá. Đi xuống gọi kìa, đi xuống gọi qua chơi kìa.
When her aunt came out, her dad handed Lily over to her with a reluctant look.
Qua đây ngoan nhá. Chưa?
Đi ra nhà ngoan nhá.
Lily ở nhà nhá. Từ quậy nhá.
Outside, he carefully tied the suitcase to his motorbike. Safe in her aunt's arms, Lily watched every move her dad made. Her clear eyes filled with an unspoken sadness. The two of them waved goodbye. As his figure and the motorbike slowly disappeared down the road. After her dad left, the house suddenly felt empty and quiet. Her aunt carried Lily inside, but the little monkey had lost her usual playful and lively spirit. Lily quietly sat at her small table, her sad eyes fixed on the door, as if still waiting for a familiar figure to return. Missing her dad made her lose her appetite. She laid her head on the table, even when her aunt brought out a delicious plate of sweet potatoes and eggs to cheer her up. Her aunt gently stroked her and tried to comfort her, but Lily just lay there, lost in her own sadness. Sometimes, she would run to the door and lean against it, looking out into the distance, a heartfelt dad echoing in her mind. The feeling of missing him was so strong that she ran into the bedroom, hiding under a soft pink blanket, like a little bird seeking shelter.
Lily. Lily. Lily ơi. Sao vậy Lily? Lily. Sao Lily vô đây làm đấy? Lily ra ăn đi chưa? Lily. Lily làm đi làm đi đấy.
Her aunt found her, gently lifted the blanket and tried to play with the teddy bear. But Lily just lay there, her big round eyes staring blankly, with no heart for games.
Bạn gấu bông này Lily. Lily ra ăn đi chưa? Lily, sao vậy Lily? Lily ăn giỏi đi. Lily. Ra ngồi chơi đi Lily. Ra ngồi chơi nè, ra ngồi xem tivi nhá. Lily. Sao vậy Lily? Gấu bông này. Lily chơi gấu bông này, gấu bông của Lily này. Gấu bông của Lily này. Đội chơi của Lily nữa nè. Lily chơi gấu bông này, gấu bông của Lily này. Lily. Lily. Ra ngồi chơi đi Lily. Ra ngồi chơi nè, ra ngồi xem tivi nhá. Lily. Sao vậy Lily? Gấu bông này. Lily chơi gấu bông này, gấu bông của Lily này.
In the days that followed, things didn't get any better. Lily missed her dad so much she refused to eat.
Lily ơi, xem tivi đi Lily. Sao vậy Lily? Bố đi công tác không nhá? Bố sẽ về với Lily sớm hơn. Lily xem một hình đi. Lily đói buồn chưa? Ví lấy thức ăn cho Lily. Lily ngầu đây nhá. Lily ơi. Cái á của Lily này.
Her aunt tried everything to coax her, from preparing tasty stir-fried squash and fresh salads to offering colorful plates of fruit. But the little monkey just sat alone on her yellow beanbag chair, her sad eyes fixed on the door, wanting nothing. Lily kept calling dad and crying out "I miss you", and "I don't want to eat, I just want my dad to come back". Her aunt watched her with a worried heart, trying to soothe her with pets and hugs, but Lily's sadness was too deep.
Sao vậy Lily? Lily, đã uống đi. Úi ngọt lắm. Lily ăn thử đi. Sao vậy? Ăn đi Lily. Sao vậy? Lily ăn đi. Lily. Úi ngọt lắm Lily ơi. Lily thử một miếng đi. Lily ăn đi. Lily. Bố về. Bố bị Lily. Ăn đi Lily. Ăn đi, úi ngọt lắm. Lily ăn thử một miếng không? Lily giỏi, Lily ăn thử một miếng không? Lily ăn đi. Miếng. Bố về rồi đó Lily. Lily ăn giỏi bố bối về nhá. Ăn đi Lily.
Ly ơi Ly.
Then, one fateful afternoon, the familiar figure of her dad suddenly appeared at the gate. As if she couldn't believe her eyes, the little monkey rushed out, cheering with joy.
Ai hả, Ly già. Nè, con vô lòng đi này. Mở cửa đi con, mở cửa đi, mở cửa đi.
Bố về rồi Lily. Lily mở cửa cho bố đây. Mở cửa nè, Lily mở cửa cho bố đi. Bố về rồi đó Lily. Lily nhớ, Lily không chịu ăn luôn á.
The moment she was back in her dad's arms, all her sadness and gloom vanished completely. He had come home with lots of gifts and bags full of fresh tasty fruit. The whole family gathered together once more.
Sao? Ở nhà ngoan chưa? Ở nhà có gì ngoan chứ, bạn đi làm chứ Ly, đúng không? Không được như vậy nhá. Chưa? Ở nhà nấu đồ ăn là gì ăn ha? Chưa? Có cảm ơn gì nhá?
Her aunt watched them with a happy smile, joining in the loving interactions.
Bye, cảm ơn gì nhá, bye. Cái, mà con mua ăn đi Ly ha, chưa? Qua đây đây ngồi nhá. Ừ, đúng rồi, giỏi quá ha. Chào bạn đi nhá.
Her dad sat on the floor, gently peeling orange and tangerine slices for Lily. Now happy again, the little monkey ate every bite.
Mua thêm con đi Ly đây. Mua thêm con đi Ly ăn nhá. Ừ, lấy bông nào? Ừ, lấy bông nào? Qua đây con, ha. Hey, cái này đi Ly nhá.
The moment the whole family ate together, with Lily sitting on her dad's lap, being fed and playfully teased by him, brought a perfect loving end to the long days of waiting.
Chào mọi người nhá. Ngoài việc quay video với Lily thì bình thường mình vẫn làm ở một công ty, với lại mình làm bán thời gian nên có nhiều thời gian để chăm sóc Lily nhá. Lily là một đứa trẻ nhỏ nên là rất là nghịch. Nhiều lúc mình cũng bó tay Lily, nhưng mà thấy Lily lớn, khỏe mạnh là mình cũng vui lắm rồi mọi người. Mong mọi người yêu quý Lily nhá, chưa? Ha. Lily ngoan chưa? Ở nhà có gì chăm sóc Lily ha? Mỗi lần bay đi làm về con mua quà thêm Lily nhá. Xong chưa, xong chưa vào đây chưa? Ok nhá. Được không? Rồi, qua đây ngồi đi. Rồi, dở tháo. Đây. Ờ, cảm ơn đấy. Đúng rồi, giỏi lắm. Đây đây ha. Lily ngoan nào, ngoan đâu, ngoan đâu? Ừ, đúng rồi. Ngòan đâu? Ừ. Đây. Đó. Trời ơi, nhét hết vào đấy hả? Nhét vào đây hả? Lily ngoan chưa? Ừm, sau ở nhà có gì ngoan nhá? Đi làm về con mua đồ cho Ly ha. Được không? Nhá, bó tay nào. Đúng rồi, bó tay nhá, nhớ nhá. Ra ăn thêm này. Khô hả? Ngòan chưa? Ăn cái nào? Đây. Ăn cái nào đi? Ừm, ăn cái nào đi?
The story begins in the quiet stillness of sleep, where the little monkey Lily, with an adorable rosy face, was lost in sweet dreams of her beloved aunt. But when her eyelids fluttered open, reality rushed in, bringing with it a gnawing, deep-seated longing. That feeling of missing her was like a dark cloud covering Lily's innocent soul. The little monkey sat up, crossed her legs on the pillow, and raised her hands to scratch her head in confusion. She then crawled off the bed and padded down the hallway to a smaller bed. Lying there, Lily gazed through the glass window and saw her dad diligently sweeping the yard outside. A look of sadness clearly visible on her face. Lily walked to the door, pressed her hands against the glass to look at her dad, then opened it and ran out to hug his leg tightly. Her dad lovingly lifted Lily and carried her inside.
Con mày xíu xíu hử? Con mày bảo đi. Sao? Sao mà buồn thế? Ừm? Buồn rồi sao?
He set Lily down on a yellow beanbag chair. Noticing the sad expression on his daughter's face, he gently stroked her head to comfort her.
Sao? Lấy bông nào? Sao đây? Ừm, sao? Ừm, sao đây? Lấy bông nào? Lấy lấy bông nào? Chờ bạn lấy đi cho Ly nhá, lấy đi cho Ly ăn nhá, được không? Nhá. Chờ lấy đi cho Ly ăn hả nhá? Ha? Được không?
Lily said nothing, only reaching for the phone to silently look through photos taken with her aunt.
Cái gì đây? Hả? Ô. Cái gì đây? Đâu, con đang xem cái gì đấy? Sao xem nào? Đâu? 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 Bỏ, cái gì đây? Sao? 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 Sao muốn chơi với gì à? Yeah? Muốn gọi chơi với gì à?
Understanding his daughter's heart, her dad suggested calling her aunt to invite her over.
À, cái gì đây đúng không? À. Được không? Ừm. Ờ, lấy đi cho Lily nhá. Nhá. Ừ, gọi chơi đi, chào bạn đi, à, chào bạn đi. Chào bạn đi nhá. Chào bạn đi ha. Ừ, chào bạn đi, bạn đang gọi đây. Hello? Đi xuống đây. Ô.
Lily watched intently, full of hope.
Lily ở nhà mình. Gì có thành không? Con chơi với Ly xíu này. Đâu? Gì không thành à?
However, as her dad listened on the phone, Lily's expression shifted from surprise to sadness upon learning that her aunt was busy and couldn't come.
Ừm, may gì bạn rồi nhá. Thôi nhà, bạn lấy đồ cho Ly ăn nhá, được không? Lấy đi cho Ly ăn nhá. Nhá, đừng u ẩn đi nhá.
Though she tried to hold them back, tears streamed down her face, and she began to sob.
Ngon nhá. Nhá. Ngon nhá. Ôi trời ơi, sao đây? Buồn đấy hả? Trời ơi, có hôi thơn thế. Trời ơi, có tí thế mà buồn. Thôi bao thư ngơi nhá. Thôi đừng có buồn nhá, chưa?
Her dad stroked her head, gave her a comforting kiss, and brought out a cup of yogurt to soothe her.
Mai, ba bảo gì xuống chơi với Ly nhá, được không? Nhá. Bây giờ bạn lấy đồ cho Ly ăn được không? Ha? Ờ, qua đây. Qua đây ngồi đi. Đây, qua đây xem chơi sốt cho Ly ăn nhá.